Okay, I think we're good to go. We'll call our town council meeting. Order. Oh my goodness, so six. Kate's very much a stickler for. Oh, sorry. All right. So let's put ten seconds off. All right. Thank you, everyone. People will call our council meeting in order and please try to play. Kate, I go, I go, I go, I always look at that clock. That's the clock. That's the official clock, though. It's in the town council chambers. It should be like the. Okay, roll call.
Here.
I'm sorry.
Here.
Council Payness. Council Rosso.
Here.
Here.
May I help?
So we have a lot of citizens now. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak, that'll be the time. Yes, sir.
And we also be a freedom. I, I did, I come here tonight. I gave it some serious thought and I thought about it. I was gonna come here earlier this year, but. I didn't want to make this political. And then when I got back from Italy, decided I come here and talk about this, because this really bothers me. And if something bothers you, come on and talk about it. I'm talking, it's, it's healthy. I'm talking about an appointee you made, the council made, not you personally, the council made. Her name is Nikki Zemudowski. This, what bothers me about this individual is she doesn't seem to fit what you put out a board or commission. Of what I heard from her, what I've seen from her, and I think we can do a lot better with town of Berlin. What bothers me is that the fact that, let's start with the Board of Education. About a year ago, she started an old basketball education. Started a, you couldn't reason with her. The police had to come. Then about two months ago, she went to urgent healthcare. The only reason I know that is because when I hurt my knee, I went to that urgent healthcare the day after, and I heard all about it. I think we all know, when you go on a healthcare facility, you have to wear a mask. She made a big scene there. Point where they had to call the police as she was with the nurses. Then she was at a, at a, I think it was a charter meeting. She was talking about the black face scarecrow or something. I'm gonna paraphrase. She didn't seem to think there was anything wrong about it. Then, we, we could go on and on. Then she was at, again, a charter meeting. She stated, and I quote, I do go out my kids to hang around with gay people, lesbian people, transgender people. She would go at the board event in Carson Harbor and constantly post and pick on the president of the board of education. She passed false rumors about CRT or whatever. My philosophy is this, I think we can do a lot better to have her on a, on any board of her commission. I think if you're not willing to compromise, and if you think you know everything, but you're not willing to grow, I think this type of individual detrimental to the town, is detrimental to what we stand for as people in this town, because we're not bigots in town, Berlin. We don't. We may have far right, far left. We all seek to try to get together and compromise. And when you sit on any type of commission in, in any town, you should be willing to listen. You should be willing to compromise. And I don't think this individual is willing to compromise or listen, considering her extreme far right stance on issues. And so she's not willing to grow. So I'm asking the council to ask her to resign or step aside and try to get somebody with a more reasonable attitude in town, Berlin. And I just, it just, it bothers me, Mr. Mayor, and I normally don't go and criticize people like this, but you know, I've been a victim. It's President Board of Education's been a victim of constant abuse online, commented anything, and she seems to be the center of it. And you try to compromise with her. And we all believe different ways. We all disagree, but we try to agree with each other, compromise. And I don't think this individual's the right fit, especially I think she's on, on playing in the zone. And then it, that's a place you've gotta be willing to listen. You gotta be willing to compromise. I think that's the right spot for her. And that's just my opinion, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak, uh, they're here or on our Zoom audience? Anyone out there? Like to address us? Only once? Only twice? All right. No one else? Go ahead and, and close the, uh, public, uh, body of citizens. There are some things, just one quick thing. We'll try and get out of here early tonight. Uh, congratulations to our candidates. Uh, Don, Jeff, congratulations on your election. All right. Excellent. He's, he's hit a no way, hit a no way out. It'll be a fun time, yeah.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, congratulations to you guys. A long campaign season. And I'm sure everybody's happy it's over. But, uh, yeah, it's a tough, it's tough, tough today. And that's it. So, uh, let's go on to our meeting agenda. Um, we have six, do our consent items first, here are six items. Got, uh, except donations to the Berlin animal control, uh, acceptance of two grand adventures in memory of Chris Porter, adventures that were placed at Timberland Golf Club. Except monetary donation totaling, uh, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and cents to the friends of the library in Salinas account. Except the donation of a hundred fifty hours and appropriate the fund for the police canat program expenditure account. Number five, except the donation of twenty-five dollars in appropriate funds that supply the expenditure account. And number six, approved waning at the main building permit fee of a hundred eighty hours for the installation of industrial park signage at the White Oak Drive and Old Brickyard Lane. Those are our six items, folks, for our set agenda. Uh, any comments or questions before we take a motion? I just want to review these before, get our practice over here. If not, we're gonna take a motion. I move accept to consent agenda. Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. Any, uh, any other comments at this time? There are none. Uh, motion on the floor. We'll vote on all of the favor. Aye, aye. Opposed? All right, so. All right. Uh, on to, uh, on to our public meeting hearing. So go ahead and call our public, uh, hearing to order. And, uh, purpose. Hey, can you read that? Can you read that part?
You just said the purpose.
Aye. Yeah, got it. Got it. Why not?
The town council, the town of Berlin will meet at Berlin Town Hall, council chambers, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Wednesday. On Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. For the purpose of holding the public hearing and the following proposed amendments, according to the county. That order has been entitled at far. It will be under the Berlin Codebook, Chapter Three, Animal Section Two Dash, I'm sorry, three dash two definition. Establish the designated off-leash for dog at this crystal creek. Happy to propose amendments to an ordinance on file, knowing for public acceptance of the council. By public hearing, the town council will be considering it on both limits to it. Data for all connective, this fourth day of November, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate that. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that wishes to make, uh, from the public, uh, comments, uh, now would be your time, and that would be focused online. There's, uh, a lot of people here, but they're very quiet. They'll locate all the members of the public that are here. But the folks that are online, if there's anyone, that would be your time. Thanks. There are no one. I'll go ahead and, uh, close the public comments, and now we are to the town council comments. But we have the same folks here. We have, what this.
It's worked out well, right?
Yes.
Complaints.
So have we had any complaints with the area that we've been utilizing? Orosch is not. It's not working.
No, no. So it's been going well over there. Good? That's great.
We, we have, uh, regularly sending, you know, we should be having more people who send, uh, regularly to the vice centennial park and do the best to break, but whenever it, they will, they have empower and found it. Actually, so.
That's good. Yeah, I mean, we, obviously, we have debated this, had many, many hearings on our ordinance committee and our town council meeting about the change from vice centennial, which was, um, uh, an issue for many years. It's under the conservation committee, and it's really not, uh, does not fit in with the rules and regulations of that part. So we looked for the, this alternate location, and that was Crystal Creek. And, uh, again, we tested it in as well, and, uh, it seems to be working well. That's, that's good to hear, and people have, I'm sure, learned of the whereabouts at this point, much like many other towns. We are fortunate to have an off-leash dog park in a small case of, uh, you know, Crystal Creek, which is a large, uh, you know, conservation area. So it's, it seems to be working out. So that's good. Anybody else in the council?
I just wanna say the public feedback. I've heard that the positive number of people donated memorial matches already, a lot of people have joined in already, so.
That's great. Yeah, that's, that's, that's good to hear. All right, so we'll go ahead and, uh, that's the end of the town council comments. We'll go ahead and close our public meeting at this time. And, uh, move on to new business.
Great. Uh, thank you. The first item on the agenda is the importance of a council member.
Yes.
That is to, uh, place for, for the rest of this, remain of this town.
Aye.
Oh, geez. Wrong answer. Sorry. I'm just looking at it. You're good. You're something. I'm thinking you can hear.
Can you hear us, Jack?
I, I can hear you speaking generally, but Orosch, what was that?
It's good you can't hear.
Are we, are we talking, uh, full start on the play, five-year penalty?
Good, good. Okay, so what are, what are we, uh?
We're gonna make the motion.
Okay.
Hold on. And then I get to swear on it.
There we go. Yeah, you got it. Good question.
Thank you for the question, because I wasn't here last meeting, so I apologize. Um, there seemed to be some confusion as to where your residence was. Are you from Berlin, or are you
Yes.
living in school, or?
No, I'm living.
Oh, you are. Are you, are you still in school, or you graduated? Oh, you haven't, or have?
No, I haven't.
Oh, you have? Oh, okay, so graduated.
So I've been home since then.
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I'd like to nominate Casey Foster to fill the young inspire term, mind you, or not, at town council.
Motion second on that?
I second that.
Oh, second? Yes, okay. Great. Uh, any, any questions? Sure you know what you're doing? Uh, great. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? All right, so, welcome.
If you challenge for your affirmance of Kate Mayby, that you faithfully discharge, warrant to walk your duties as a town councilman, the town of Berlin, the best employees.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kate. Thank you. And you can go and sit next to her.
Congratulations. All right. All right. Thank you. All right, so.
The agenda item number two is to, for council member.
Tonight, item number two is to, uh, the new council member to some of the committees that, uh, Mr. Urinaga, Berlin. I move to appoint Casey Foster to the fire committee, a manager of the evaluation committee, playing field committee, and rule for.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second, thank you.
For, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so. Thank you. Thanks.
The agenda item number three is the active tax amendment, the chapter three, animals, Berlin, code book. Uh, we just have to complete the town, um, public hearing for this. And as a refresher, we already, um, action in December to create the Crystal Creek, uh, each free area. Then also give the six one, probably for the vice centennial part, federal area, which ran out. So the public hearing and the language that's here qualified that to the code book.
And, uh, it's good to go now. Good to go. Thanks, Orosch. That was a, uh, very, very long road, uh, we had to get here, but I think, I think we did. And, and as we discussed in a public hearing, it seems to be, uh, a good road we went down, and it seems to be working out. So we're happy when, uh, we can, uh, perhaps, uh, solve some issues in town that have been, uh, around for a while and, uh, make, uh, things work out a little bit better for everybody. Uh, so that's great. Comments from anyone? Or a motion? Good? All right, good? Yeah, all right. All right, we're good. So, uh, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to accept the text amendments to chapter three, animal of the Berlin code book.
Second on that?
One second, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? None? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? So.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number four is authorization for the town manager to execute necessary documents to activate two thousand twenty-two Steve Grant, Steve Belloa Park. I do see Mr. Mahoney there. You wanna share the good news, Mr. Mahoney?
Well, the town was awarded a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the project, and so in order to move it forward, we need to authorize the town manager to enter into the grant agreements and other related documents.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Joe.
That's great. Moving forward with that project, that's wonderful. And this grant money is excellent. So, uh, you know, we have certainly been talking about this for a long time. We're very familiar with this. Uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, there's no other comments, folks? Comments? All right, we're gonna take a motion.
Move to pass the test for resolution, authorizing town manager to execute and file a Steve Grant application. And I guess Department of Economic and Community Development have provided such additional information to execute such other documents, the major priorities, the executive and assistance agreement, the data coding for the state financial assistance execution agreement developer, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions there on through the primary. The active authorized representative of the town of Berlin.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other, there's, are there any other comments or questions? There are none. Vote on the motion. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
So, move. All right, thanks, Jim. I know Jim and Chris had worked on this. Thank you.
I'm all for you, Jim.
Okay.
I, the authorization for the town manager to enter into an agreement with real property position LLC, and going to get sand and stone cooperation to extend the forbearance related, we're going to get sand and stone properties. Jim?
Yes, so just a brief refresher. Remember that, uh, Connecticut Sand and Stone Properties are basically between the Amtrak line and the, or rail freight line that's, uh, at the rear of New Britton Road. These properties have some environmental contamination. Uh, the town has received Brownfield's grants to do investigations. There is a, um, prospective buyer, which is Real Property Acquisition Corporation LLC that's, um, related to Clean Earth and its parent companies, and Connecticut Sand and Stone Corporation would be selling the properties to them. So we've been working through this for quite a while. We've done quite a bit of environmental investigation. And I think we've talked before about the key, the key to this property is the, um, the state, uh, Department of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Protection is doing a pilot program for soil disposal, uh, that Connect, uh, Clean Earth would want to take advantage of. And so we're waiting for them to issue the request for proposals for that program. We're hoping that it will be early next year. And, um, this, we have this forbearance agreement, basically by which, um, they pay us, uh, forty-five-hundred dollars a month toward back taxes, and they're also doing, you know, contributing to the environmental investigation cost. So, um, we'd like to, the, the agreement expires at the end of November. I know that , uh, Real Property Acquisition and, um, Connecticut Sand and Stone are still finalizing their, their agreement, but we'd like authorization to extend for another year, uh, subject to the review and, and approval of corporation or council of the agreement.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Yeah, we've been, it's just been, we're working on this for quite a while, too. I can see, uh, some progress being made. So that's, uh, that's a good thing. Any other, if you have good questions, comments, and we've been working on this for a while. If no other comments or questions, we will go ahead and take a motion.
You will authorize the town manager to enter into the extension to the forbearance and environmental grant-related agreement with real property acquisition LLC, Connecticut Sand and Stone Corporation to extend the forbearance period, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, subject to review and approval, corporation council.
Second on that?
Second, thank you.
Uh, any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, there are none. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, I'll follow. All right, uh, voting carries. Takes a lot of, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. Agenda item number six is the Timberland Golf Course Professional contract. So, um, as you probably know, this, uh, contract expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And even through a, uh, RFP process, it was getting sealed with, and, uh, Mr. Barrow was the only person who, uh, who was naming the hat, and, um,
The Tiger Woods? What happened to Tiger? Rumor is he was gonna.
Oh, 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 Tiger Woods.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, his, uh, contract, uh, his retainment, seventy thousand, and he wanted, uh, ninety thousand. But at the same time, uh, he had, oh, uh, commission previously was part of his package, and then also, um, earnings from the driving range. It's going to stay on its own. That is, in case, it'll be the ninety thousand dollars straight retainer. Uh, we also made some changes there. Uh, previously, the, uh, cash was taken in by, um, under the supervision of Mr. Barrow. With a new director coming in, um, and just fulfilling later, yes, for that, be the town owner, the owner responsible for, or paying cash. So the attached, uh, contract had been reviewed by Mr. Barrow, without commission, um, the finance director and, uh, supervisor, was also acting as the director, acting as the golf director. And then corporation counsel and myself. So, uh, happy to answer any questions you may have, but it is time to ask you to, uh, pay your consideration to improve this contract, the five-year term, with the two-year term option.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, and, uh, I, uh, I, I would assume by the the absence of the crowd this time, that, uh, folks are happy with it. I know Mark's a great guy, and I know he's done phenomenal job out at Tickle Land and, you know. Happy with, uh, this, uh, result here. Um, so that, that's a good thing, and I take it, uh, he's happy with this, uh, contract. So I know you had some discussions with him, so that's good. Um, that's, it's, it's great that we can, you know, go forward with the person, and it's not so much for everyone, so that's, that's wonderful. Um, any other, uh, questions?
It's great.
I saw a number of people came and spoke, and a couple, or it's a couple, double here that night, yeah.
Bitter than this evening.
Yeah, I did. And that was great, but, you know, and that's good, though, because that's right. That's what we want to hear. We want to hear people come to our meetings and tell us what they think and what they wanna see happen in towns. That's what we're here for, so it's all good. All right, good. So we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion on this.
I move authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Mr. Barrow for services of the Timberland Golf Course Professional for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. The option for the town to expire the contract for years.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second, thank you.
All right, there's no other comments or questions? None? All with the favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Welcome back, Mark Barrow. Happy to have you. Hey, uh, why, I, I, I know we had one appointment, I'm sorry. You wanna push that up one more meeting? Sorry about that, Kate. There's one more meeting, sorry. We'll, we'll, we'll do it in December. Uh, so with that, there are our town managers report.
Who want to go today? All right, so, uh, I, I, so, uh, I won't, this is, uh, something that I would say, I'm, I'm prepared for this. Uh, the, the, it's a C coming up, the big C, the capital C, changing line.
Wow, 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 easy, so. Easy, easy. Okay, wow, yeah.
I wanna give you enough time to, uh, process this, think about it, but this is not a proposal, but we'll come back to it more substantially later. So this has to do with the current environment in recruitment and retention in the towns, right? This is not unique to Berlin, but to other towns as well. You can ask our corporation counsel, we've had CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Get together, all kind of, the local town managers. Um, it is becoming increasingly difficult to the rank people. Especially, um, planning, zoning, uh, accessory office. Just a moment here, right? Uh, we, you know this, we, it took two years for us to build the zoning enforcement, uh, since pollution. In addition to that, uh, as we go through the interview process, this is coming to the HR managers and myself, too. If you look at, uh, what the current workforce is asking, look at LinkedIn, or look at my word, people are looking for flexibility. Uh, meaning they're not married to the virgin, eight thirty, four thirty timeframe, believe the work from home sometimes, um, four-day work week. Coming and, um, go to a doctor's appointment, but then come back at work a little later. So you probably remember when we had the COVID situation a couple of years ago, we, we defended the rush. People came in the morning. We want people to overlap at the same time, and some of the folks came in the afternoon and fixed cars, fixed our done. So what I wanna do is to take this time to work with human resources and some, gathering some data from other towns, um, to explore the possibility of doing a pilot program for the town hall for a four-day work. So right now, we have, we are open Monday through Friday. So right now, we have, we are open Monday through Friday, Thursdays to stay late. And on Fridays, we stay open until one o'clock. So what if we extend the hours every day? And during the summer, try to do a pilot program to have a four-day work weekend, always get three days. Some towns are already doing it, but some other towns, like Wailing Creek, I'll give the data before we do this. We have also, I think I mentioned this to you, some of them have positions that doing a little bit of a flex time. So I'll give you an example. I had a manager who had a doctor's appointment at ten o'clock in the morning. Previously, they would come here and then go to the doctor's appointment and then come back here, five and forty-five minutes back and forth. With COVID, we got everybody laptops and people could work from home. So work till nine thirty, but oh, go to the doctor's office, do your business, come back to work. We have also noticed availability department, for example, we have fewer people coming to the door because we might go into the online application. Thursday afterwards, which should be a busy time for the town hall, so take my word, nobody comes into any of the offices anymore. It's COVID, there are a lot of things can be done online now. So I'm planting the seed now because when we met with the police chief, we said, one of the things that the police officers ask, what do you have a pension? You know what we get asked? Do you have flex time? Do you have the flexibility to work from home? Especially if you're trying to attract a younger workforce, they're beginning to get babysitting. Difficulty to focus work together and handle the time difference, all of those things. So we want to try this. I'll get the information. Paula, HR directors helping me out, each other, the towns, getting information, put it together and then talk more about it, but my goal is just to see a huge for the summer, just for the town hall, library, center. For a small group, try this option and see how it works. And, and what I'm going to do, beginning tomorrow, I'm going to start creating a log of when people come into every office. What time do they come in? What questions do they ask? So we'll work on that. So that my spring will have a good idea of where this is going. And I, and I say this because we have to start thinking for our future and how, how we deliver services. Model that for a big two years ago, I think we asked. And clearly, you know, people don't want to hear this. Younger folks are asking flexibility. They are. And, and you don't want to, you can't deny it at all its point. And people have actually said it, but don't have that because they can demand that. Right? Especially if you have six openings and you have only one person looking for the town and it happens a lot. So I want to come on that, but I just want to prepare you for this so that we don't go into shock. Propose something?
Is there any consideration? And I don't know because I know this is just a thought process. So if I understand it correctly, you're looking to have town hall in the open four days a week? Or are you looking to have people work a four-day work schedule where some people maybe are off on Monday, some are off on Friday? So this way, town hall can still be open to the citizens Monday or Friday. Still don't, you know, so we're still here to serve the citizens.
We, we talked about that. The tricky part is that there are obviously one or two people for that bookwork. Whether somebody comes into the town clerk's office or the planner's office and the building department, but that you don't have enough staff to handle all that, that might be an issue, but that's an option. We are doing a plan to do a pilot program like that. We do it with the building department, for example. You probably remember this, with the building department, started a year ago. Most of the folks who are contractors would like the building official to be there on site at seven or seven thirty in the morning. Because especially during summer, that structure starts early. So if we say the town hall, but at eight thirty, you get your coffee, go there at nine o'clock, they have last three, four hours. So we do the rotation now with the building officials where they start at seven in the morning and they leave to your point, like around three o'clock. And the one coming at eight thirty, we'll stay to four thirty. So it works the town for over two, four hours. So that's the other one that the challenge that people have is one size they're not going to fit on. And also, the friendly union of Ireland prefers to treat everyone the same way. So that might not work. So I think people are coming along. It's, it's a mindset that if, if all are side one, you know, everybody should be treated the same way. But it's not, even right now, it's different. People have different hours depending on where they work, building or what facility.
So if I can, is this a forty-hour week that they work on or thirty-seven and a half or thirty-five? What is it?
Yeah, thirty-five, thirty-seven and a half and four.
All, all of them. So you're still, you're still going to have those same hours? You're just trying to, okay.
Will there be coverage at night? I mean, people kind of, I used to work for a vehicle department. We're open on Saturdays, close Mondays. Now, I don't propose we do that here, but if you extend your hours, would you extend them at night so the public wouldn't be inconvenienced?
There are inconvenience now and, well, my point, people don't count Thursday evening. After COVID, we have fewer people just coming through the door. It used to be that Thursday evening is a part of the time for folks to come in. So if you, if you do a four-day work weekend in the summer, you'll extend it to six o'clock pretty much every day, five thirty, whatever.
So a little bit longer every day?
Yeah, a little bit longer every day. So you'll be working the same number of hours, but at the same time, you'll be here all the time.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we have, go ahead.
I'm happy to explore new ideas and try to attract new people, but as our economy rockets to the bottom of the ditch, I'm finding already how it's a lot easier to find in my industry. Taking six months, we may not be so manic, only to create a commentator, but we're in the service business, we have to serve the public. Yes, I, I agree. But also, it's, it's a way of changing the mindset too, right? I mean, we
I'm all for looking at it, exactly.
I, I wouldn't use a knee-jerk reaction. The last year has been very strange with applying people and starting to go the other way now. It's like corporations are laying people off and forcing them, starting to figure out their, their, their living.
The challenge that we have in the local government, most of you in the school, if they're on an accessory track or a town plan or a building official, where he wants, you hear the popular ones, maybe who are school engineer, accountant or teacher. But where does one stop?
Our education system has gotten rid of all the practical things. Our local high school got rid of all the hands-on carpentry and auto shop and they think everybody should go to college. That's, that's a function of teachers, you mentioned.
True. The, the point is that the pipeline is dry. So new people are coming through the pipeline and we're going to see how we can come in. So the, the other one, this is what the town officials are talking about. It used to be that the towns had real good benefits, good intentions. Now it's defined contributions, same with what's in the pilots. So people can shop and come there and say, maybe other options, so. I don't have all the answers, but I, I think we have to start looking into.
I'm glad you're exploring, don't get me wrong. I want to be cautious and make sure the public needs or serves.
That's what we thought, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And al- also, if you do, like, if we do a small group, a pilot, even in the summer, then we'll see how it goes, dedicate it to it well. But I'm not ready there. Tomorrow, with the development, I'll make a conversation. Just wanted to give you about it, that we're exploring this and gathering some data. I have, I think both towns have boards for a four-day work weekend. I want to see how successful they are. I'd love to have that. My little town is all what it is. Same reason, because I'm having a chat.
This is your little town. I remember my little town.
I didn't just say my little town. Yeah, town. Our customers says much better.
There you go. You've always said that, yeah.
Wait a minute, in what town? In Brooklyn?
Wallingford. All right. So speaking of change.
Wow, wow, too much change in the night. We start like on the ground.
Want to bring a discussion to you about the change in ordinance? This has to do with the increase of bid limit right now, it's at ten thousand? I've spoken with the District Corporation Council here. But for me, that there is a way that we could accommodate this, move the bid limit to twenty-five onto the state contract level, right? Maybe perhaps, maybe the twenty-five thousand of, like that before, to an ordinance. The second one is in accordance to what exploit we can get an ordinance state contracts, so eliminate the bid waiver, we have books of the state contract. We do that now quite often. Why? Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, go back and bid everything that the state does a bidding for you. We come to you with state contracts. My short three years here, you have never seen our way on something. About that, go back and do it now because they do it for us. So we're going to have an ordinance committee, probably scheduled, talk more about it in a couple of weeks. And I'd like to begin the conversation with you. And, and remember, we're doing this to make government more efficient, run faster, run faster. And especially right now, when you have to with the, with things are changing. By the time you go through this process, you know, get bid, come to the council, the prices have changed already. And, and this ten thousand was good, probably, the nineteen, so when this was put together on that, that's the point. But state has moved since then. I love towns that have the twenty-five thousand dollar limit. So let's explore that. Same, same thing. Pretty much ninety-nine percent of the time, the council has always approved, but it's not being approved for a pool. So do you want to add anything to that, Chip? But we can.
No, you know, like you said, there is a specific state statute that provides notwithstanding a charter provision to the contrary, the legislative body can adopt the ordinance setting any bid limit as high as twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, you, you joke about that ten thousand. It was a thousand dollars for a long time statute. It went from thousand to like seven to ten to twenty to twenty-five, a very relatively short period of time, so. I think it makes a lot of sense. And then when you look at state contract, you also want to look at the ability to purchase through consortiums. A lot of towns take advantage of consortiums throughout the level that have products and services available that they already procured bids for and have contracts that you can bootstrap onto and think you can adjust the pricing for things like computers. It's kind of the best practice at this point.
Excellent. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so I mean, we tried with the charter provision, correct? But unfortunately, it lost it, anything else. But again, this is to make things easier, make it more efficient, responsive, get things done faster. And there's a reason why they are so, it's the bureaucracy and the statutes and the laws and that ordinance. Some of them are not good. It's, it's there for a reason, but that is a, you can't have a framework. Couple of old business issues, that's enough.
No, that's good. No, you know, we always have to look to improve our service and, and, you know, move into the twenty-first century sometimes sort of thing. And yeah, now it makes sense to look at all this and see what we can do better.
Yeah.
We're looking at that and we'll go forward. Continuing the discussion and pilot projects and see how it all goes.
Yeah, exactly. That's good. Couple of weeks out, I'd like to schedule an ordinance committee meeting. I'll, I'll December, first of December, Thursday, sixth of October.
So we got one meeting in December, right? The council meeting? What's that? That's fun. That's the, that's the thirteenth, okay. Okay, yeah. What days? We had the eighth, you said?
It's just good, eighth is good.
Whatever. The first, the first of the eighth of December for the ordinance.
Yeah, you're not on it and yeah. You don't have to either because you're taking.
Right, yeah, right.
Jack, and you want to exit other than?
Sandy, she can't do the first.
Are we talking ordinance? Are we talking ordinance committee meeting right now?
Yes, yeah.
Eight, eight, Jack.
Sorry, it's, it's been rosh, it's been just a little choppy with my connection, but what was the date?
December eighth. It's a Thursday.
Yeah, that should be, that, that should be absolutely fine with me.
So for the agenda for that day, I'd like to bring the ATV dirt bike issue, two things going on with that right now. Tony Kupola gathering some information, looking at other towns and some ordinances. See if there's anything that maybe to tweak with ours. The second one, our community relations officer making some progress with the neighbors and the gentleman, other family in town on Hwood Road. Hwood is where the family and the
Correct them and try. Yeah, I'm sure the other folks.
Neighbors are, yeah. So they're engaged in conversation early, that's why I'm here with that pie. By December eighth, we should have, it might resolve, but I hope so. Next, the best, the mobile one. Well, I mean, so, yeah. And the neighbors are not against, they're not trying to ban, but they're trying to be reasonable to say, can we have some hours? Fill this, you do, right? Not disturb the neighbors, to have some hours that the kids can, these ATVs and their bikes and house normal. But restrict the hours so that people have some decent time. So I'm not promising anything, but we're having a conversation. All right. And in addition to that, we'll bring the two items I mentioned for the ordinance. They can bid threshold twenty-five and I will get some language for the get the contract and the consortium plan as well. Like the regional commerce, like Crown, for example, they do all the good things, but you get the price. So we'll work on that. Update on the senior housing generator of the Berlin Housing Authority. They had, and they agreed to accept, get, which is great. Target. Based upon the commissioning of the unit itself, so Jack's son has got a PO, getting a group, can I look at it? They are scheduled for this to come in. You know, tested and prepared and commissioned. And once that happens, they'll put it on the panel and hook it up. Good.
That's great.
So I'll keep you posted on the timing of that. I think a couple of weeks for them to complete that. And then the, the senior housing project, we, we got a there was a letter that showed that There was a letter that showed that, uh, Wells Fargo had some money. But I I told Joe Jasky that we could still work with, uh, our cooperation council, not necessarily. With with his attorney, get the information that we need that actually shows that there's money for the Berlin Housing Authority for the project. Um, that hasn't happened so far, um. I've just reached out to, uh.
Surprise.
Company and informed them for teens and, um. Poxting. Would they exit?
Yeah. And, uh, okay. So Wells Fargo is the. Supposedly they, uh.
I had, there was something with the Wells Fargo that I had.
Okay.
Like this and say it's a controlling housing authority.
Uh, okay.
Supposedly Wells Fargo just got.
Okay. Yes, right, um. Okay, well, so we'll wait and see how that, uh, goes. Okay, yes.
To wrap it up, so probably remember, um, my review, I. One of the things I mentioned was to bring a page to you from some words and conditions. I feel that you don't get enough updates, information from the public building commission, on the important projects they're working on. They're never given a report in council. Um, same with planning and zoning, there are applications coming through there, then we are ability to pass and write. So I'm gonna line them up, checking starting with, uh, public building commission. There are a lot of good work going happening there, but brief five, ten minutes, perhaps the staff person might help you come in. And if one of the commission members is down to come, letting people be updated on where things are. There are a lot of interesting applications coming through planning and zoning. I'll combine, I'd like to combine that with economic development. And so give you a flavor of things that are in the pipeline, speeding the deal. Um, you you hear them only, uh, when it's pretty much done. Sometimes you don't hear them. Thinking it's complete, it's true. Alright, so, uh, but especially for all of you, it's it would be great to have a flavor of having this stuff.
There is a lot of. It's unbelievable what's going on, yeah, it's great.
So it's, uh, so. At least once a month, every other meeting, um, will bring one, who. They don't have anything, it's fine, but.
I think, um, I have another one in mind that we might want to hear updates from going forward, but we can figure that out. That'd be the VNA. Well, absolutely, yeah, because I mean.
Um, that's good.
I was really encouraged with, um, a lady came up to me. I think she's on the VNA board. I think she worked for the town, but. Uh, about when we had that joint meeting with the VNA and she was happy to hear all that, you know. We had a good conversation with everybody in that meeting and. So I know Cara, the the chairwoman, yeah, she's wanted to work closely with us too to, you know, move forward and try and hopefully. Uh, pick some things there, um, make a little bit more responsible on their budget and, you know, again. The first priority is always the care. That's what we want to make sure we maintain that level of care that we have that folks are happy with, but. So, yeah, we can figure out once a month at least, uh, either, you know, uh, Alina or, uh. Carol, maybe both, may maybe both. I I think we're working right with the board to to. Make sure they get involved. I think we, right in the joint meeting, I think we talked about that, that they should have an agenda item on there. Um, meeting every time they need to be in a board and talk about, you know, budget issues and how things are running.
Yeah, ideally, especially in the group forum.
Yeah, yeah.
The staff and the almost all of the board and commission, I mean.
Yeah, Jack see it from here past them, right?
So I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, they could rotate if they they want, you know, people could rotate there. I mean, I just think we can. Because I I think, you know, what I heard going through the whole VNA, um, discussion was, um. They want more interaction, you know, with us and, you know, with to to discuss this with the board and and with with the, uh. Director there, so I think that's good. That's a good thing, you know, uh, that that's other than. One of the more positive things that came out of that whole, um, discussion, so, um. Yeah, that I think that's a good thing. The more we discuss it, hopefully we can forward and maybe, uh. Build shore of some things there, which would be wonderful. And because, right, um, Alia's, they've been there what, six months? I've been. Eight months, okay, so, yeah, she's learning what's going on, so. Which takes time, you know that, so it's a good time, maybe, you know, whether we start the first in a year or whatever, just to. Absolutely take on it, pretty great, right? Yeah, I'm just, I think it was, I I think that big meeting was great discussion. We had great talk, so. Continue that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, were they happy?
Well, they understood.
Well, yeah, so that's what, yeah, no, it was it was very positive. And I'm happy to hear that, you know, by folks too, so great, that's what we can continue. Yeah, good, alright. Any other group that you would? Um, no, I mean, those are the big ones, right? And certainly economic development and and public buildings. Just planning zoning is huge with stuff going on in town that we don't always hear about unless we kind of look at it ourselves and and VNA and. I I I'm sure there may be some others, but as we go forward, but you know, even if you. If something's big going on, one of the commissions, right? You know, July, something big is happening with, I don't know, somebody and they can come in and give us a two minutes or zoom in for a couple of minutes. That that would be helpful for us to know because we'll get the questions. About a lot of things going on in the commissions and, you know, I'll call you or we'll call the head of the commissioner or the head of that department, but. We don't always know, which is helpful to have at least, uh, a little, a little knowledge when someone. Stops us walking down sidewalk and wants to wants to cut us up, but rather than try to get back, you know. We always get back to them, but it's nice to have a little bit of that working knowledge as we're walking around town, so. Yeah, great, thank you, that's all I have. Thanks, Arush, appreciate that. Well, good stuff. Counselor, oh, special committee, we haven't had any, right? No, we haven't had any, so, oh, oh, yes. Oh, you did. That's right, you did. On the can, oh, that's right, are you, are you?
I'm the big thing.
Oh, the big committee of the calendar, yes, that's. Big one, that's huge.
I'm done with you.
What was it, really?
The very stressful ones, very. Very stressful. Very stressful dealing with them. Other members of the committee.
Brenda doing advance.
I do know, he did all the work, um. So a couple, I mean, just a couple of days to look at is in July, um, or until on Tuesday, so we shifted those weeks.
Okay.
Um, and then in October, um, because there's only going to be one meeting, November twenty first. We're running on the third and seventeenth, and then we want to have one on the twentieth, twelfth. Because again, only one in, uh, November and one in December.
I mean. When do we need a next meeting?
Yeah, it will be, I'll put it down.
Just, just.
Yeah, most of the guys.
Yeah.
Labor Day is. Fourth.
Right.
Oh, alright, so, so is that messed up? Is it messed up here with that?
We usually meet that Tuesday after Labor Day, but we hold it.
How, uh?
No, just some people travel, you know, you don't know. We can leave it as.
Yeah, we've always taken this closer.
Yeah, you wanted to see what happens, yeah, uh.
Alright.
Let's see if that doesn't work.
We always have a a meeting after the holidays. It's Monday off and a really, so it is a lot now.
Yeah.
Especially if you're aware.
True. Yeah.
They take a look at it, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and it'll clear, I mean, if there's any more discussions or, uh, existing discussing.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, that's a little bit, thanks, I wish we had, yes, also if you give these ordinance, there's two. Meetings will be much shorter, anybody. That's a good.
There are more efficient people. You like more efficient, yes, more efficient is good for everyone on the team, yes, that's good. Alright, good.
Are you comfortable with meetings being planned when I spoke?
Um.
Do we really need to? I mean, it's totally up to you. It's just the only thing is, right now, the meeting's extended over to the third and the seventeenth.
Yeah.
You have your council meeting. Uh, I'm I'm sorry, the election on the seventh. And so then you have.
Took another couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, and then you have it swearing in on the twenty first October.
Yeah.
Right, so, I am, I'm sorry, never. Um, so it's up to you. We have had three meetings in October before, but if you want to just. Do the third and the seventeenth and see if you need another meeting, you can always schedule that.
May maybe, well, let's think about it for next time, but I I mean, the only thing that seems like is figure from the seventeenth to the twenty first, that's a. Long period of time, which means that's somewhere there's going to be one ugly agenda and a lot of stuff on it.
True.
So, but we can see it, right?
Or we could not be on the seventeenth and be on the twenty fourth.
Maybe.
Well, I vote for that.
Yeah, maybe that makes sense. Let's, we'll we'll think of that for next time, you know, we'll.
So I'll get on the seventeenth.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I would. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, let's do that. We see each other on many other. Yeah, we'll see each other somehow, yeah. Yeah.
That's a good thing. Happy marriage, you know, for thirty seven years. Okay.
Right, so that's good, uh. Uh, alright, so council communications, where are they? Any council communications? Anyone?
That, you know, they, uh. Like, a great job for the luminaries.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's where a town were beautiful.
So let's do it.
It was well done.
Good stuff.
You know, for the. To that, to the events, I think it was, it was a lot of good things happening last week, uh, you know, very nice, very nice. And thank you all who came out on Friday too. I mean, it was nice, everyone came on, very nice.
When I say the luminaries, I mean, they even went beyond Veterans Park and were by other non, it was just very nice. It kind of gave you a little town pride and appreciation for the veterans, so they did a great job.
The Veterans Park is amazing. It's just amazing that they really have done, right, an unbelievable job. They go through their memorials, they have. More to it. Since I've ever seen a park that looks that nice and and anywhere, I mean, it's a great memorial and they do a great job.
And you know, economic development. The design and put that part.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started probably ten years ago.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good, it's. Great events for the veterans. Uh, other council communications? Good?
We see two or three students, they're almost forget to say, gentlemen.
The public, uh, audience of citizens over, by the way. You say she has now that. Alright, so no more council impatient, so acceptance of minutes, we have two meetings to, uh, like, if you look over notes.
We will re-accept for minutes for the October twenty fifth. And twenty two special joint meeting.
Thank you, second on that?
Uh, the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, yes, I will second that.
Alright, great, uh, any other questions on that? If not, all is in favor? Alright, pose. One extension, yes.
I I too have seen, it was reflected in the minutes that I was present, however, I was not Kate. So I will.
Alright. Alright, so, uh, November second.
And we'll re-accept for minutes for the November second, on the twenty two special meeting.
Uh, yes, okay, thank you, second on that?
Second.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any other, any comments or?
I'm gonna abstain because I was.
Alright, thank you, please. Um, okay, so, uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, two extensions, alright, so so, any posed? So. We're moving too fast tonight, it's very, very, very quickly. Way too fast. Okay, wow, we have, we have come to the end of the road here, coming to our, uh. Do we need any take decision?
No.
We don't. Oh, my goodness, you're kidding me. Wow, eight oh five, is that a record?
Very.
Yeah, happy, at least happy Thanksgiving, I mean, uh, out of here, uh. Pretty quickly, so I guess I mean, me and Mochi to adjourn. I got a second, I have a, all of the favorite? Don't move, uh.
Bye, everybody, be good.